Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Muscatine County Board of Supervisors meeting for Monday, December second, two thousand nineteen. We'll call the meeting to order. Our first item of business is to review the agenda.
Move approved is presented. Second.
Jeff has moved, Santos has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
The agenda's approved. Item number three, receive comments from the public. Anyone from the public wishing to address the board on a subject not already on our agenda? Please approach the podium. Yes, sir. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for us.
Cool.
Yes.
This is the first time I ever did anything like this.
First time for everything.
Dennis. Oh, sorry.
No, no problem.
My name is Dennis Conway. On the four four Green Street, Muscatine, Iowa. Four four. Uh, can I talk now?
Yes, please.
Okay. On March twenty second, nineteen hundred, my grandfather, John Harper, and his brother Charles bought the farm at nineteen fifty one Bayfield Road. John and his wife Sophia bought Charles' share out on approximately in the year of nineteen ten. John and Sophia Harper. No, John and Sophia Heber uh bought the farm from uh bought from Charles and then they passed away when I was really young. My mom, Lucille Harper, and her sister Mary got it in in the will. Lucille was fourteen or sixteen and Mary was sixteen or eighteen when they died. And their mother's brothers farmed the farm, the old Heber and the Heber boys farmed the farm. And then my married Philip Conway and after a couple years, they bought Mary's share out because she wanted to go to California. Dad died nineteen ninety nine, so my brother John got the farm in the will. He served on the first nuclear missile site in Alaska. But before it became a state. And John had a heart attack in two thousand six and my wife and my sons took care of him from then on. My wife and I got married in nineteen sixty five and we took care of him from two thousand six. And he passed away in two thousand fifteen, so we, he passed it on to my wife and I. I went to that farm every day for almost seventy seven years. The only time I didn't go was when I was in the army. When I got married, I uh, I worked down there for thirty five years. When I uh got home, I put on my farmer clothes and went out till dark every day. And then after uh, my wife, she wanted to go back to work, so two thousand four, she went to Walmart and got a job. And I took it back and forth. So two thousand five, I started there in April of fifteen. And I was there until uh last year at this month. I left in two thousand uh, well, I left November twenty second. I uh when uh, a week, a week ago Friday night, I taught a toxic trespasser on my ground. He didn't have our ground. The whole family owns it. My son, grandsons, and great grandsons. You know, that's what we we consider. And the hunter, he had his two little girls there and he's at least twenty foot on our property. And I told him he was trespassing. He came over to me and showed me his cell phone. He said, you don't own this lane over here. The lane that I've owned, drove on for seventy seven years. So let's, told him I'd check one day and see if we if we did. Well, we went to the recorder, to our lawyer, and then out to the county engineer. And found out that the road is a low graded road. That the only time a county vehicle was on it was when they came out to pick up my dad after he died. And when they came out to pick up my brother after he broke his hip. So uh there are no benefit for anybody except us, you and that lane. The animal ground is on this side and Clarish Fishland Farm is on this side. The lane is approximately six hundred feet long and thirty two foot wide. And I would like to uh see if our family could buy it, so nobody would take, you know, landlocked, I guess, or something like that. And if if you're, that's fine. It's just uh, it's just we'd like to pay it off with our property tax, but so much on our property tax. And I haven't slept for two weeks now.
Where's the answer?
Pardon me?
What, I'm, we're trying to.
Nineteen fifty one, baby.
Nineteen fifty one, baby.
I have.
Less than the bayfield.
Okay, yeah, let me just.
So Keith, it looks like there's a, like about a.
I have, well, I'm not against hunters because hunters hunted the farm. Uh, Ira Dunsworth and Tom Murphy, their father, them, the kids, the grandsons, been hunting the farm for fifty years.
I think.
And then we have people come out mushrooms.
Oh, stay alive.
My, his youngest son, his brother, I'll talk, him and my grandson, they go to deer hunting for the second season. So they went out and put up some deer stands and that's, I think that's when the trouble started because there's a lot of deer stands on our property that is not ours.
So it looks like you border the state's property with a lot of your properties, right? And then up to the cedar. So you're talking about that section of lane that comes from Bayfield, right up there between those properties. Keith, are you?
Yeah.
That's a class B or?
It is not. It's actually a level A.
It's a level A?
Gets treated like that, the blade man goes down there. Maybe twice a year. He only goes to the, where you see the DNR property, there's a gate there and we don't want to lose gate it is.
It goes to the where does it go? It's, I see it, it runs back to the houses, right? But it kind of meanders, so I would assume that's private lane once it gets back to those parcels?
There's a straight course.
Yeah.
It's children's right.
And that's by Fincham and the and the state?
Yeah.
And then, so does that other property, I don't see, is there a residence there?
I don't think so.
So we think it's just a.
We're back behind, yeah, nobody lives there yet until we build a new house up there.
Okay. So the only neighbor other than say that Iowa is Fincham?
I've I've had a stroke, so three months ago that affected my hearing.
I'm sorry, I'm mumbling. The only, the only neighbor other than the state of Iowa is Clarence Fincham?
Clarence Fincham.
Yep.
Fincham lays to the east and and the state of Iowa's got that little, what is that, forty uh that lays in there kind of between you, Danny?
It is not forty.
It's not forty? Okay.
It might be twenty five.
Okay. Uh, it's hard to tell from this back.
Oh, so you've got a.
The problem, the problem, I think, that you're that you're speaking of is you're having individuals come down that roadway and wanting to go to the state ground, is that correct?
Yeah, they want, they uh, we own the property on this side.
On the west side?
Yeah, before the state ground.
Correct.
They want to go through there to.
But are they, are they using the roadway to get back to that state?
Not, not, they they uh come down for the gravel road and then that's dirt rest of the way. It's gravel, probably uh.
Coming off of Bayfield, we're talking now, correct?
Yeah, that's all gravel.
Yep. And Keith, you say that's a, that's a A road?
Yeah.
Okay.
Why would that be an A road?
Probably just forget.
Said there's a gate back there by the DNR. I don't know whose gate it is.
Yeah, we thought it was our lane, so we we put the gates up. Well, the gates been there ever since I was seven years old.
Gates been there forever.
Does Fincham use that road to access the farm there?
He does on the, well, his hard man does.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, uh, I don't know, you know. If he was having the whole outfit, he he's got a key, you know, I'll give him a key.
At least it wasn't that.
But I'll, you know, I mainly want, you know.
That's what we asked.
Probably get you on that one.
That's what she was asking for.
There are parking spots along Bayfield for the hunters.
There are down that jerk.
Yeah.
Where you park about two cars down, but the DNR came in this summer and uh shut it off about ten feet off of Bayfield. Not able to put a.
Yeah, so there's like a little access right off that where it kind of sweeps around.
Around the turn.
So Keith, what are the, what are the uh, what are the options here? We could, we could look at taking that to a level C? Or a B at at the landowner's request? Is that, what, give us our options?
Well, right now, the problem is if if you vacated it, then you landlocked people.
Right.
So that's really.
Not going to be an option.
Not an option. Uh, you have a default level C that's been out there since he was little with the gate there.
Is it a locked gate?
Yes, there's people that come down with steel. But we thought it was our lane, that's why there's a gate.
Yeah.
Where's, where's the gate at? Is it right off Bayfield?
No, the gate is up there at the south corner of the DNR property.
Right.
All right. I mean, the only people that would landlock is that is the conway parcels, right?
Yeah, the one I covered, they done.
Oh, I see the gate there.
Okay.
So it's right.
No, it's halfway.
Halfway down.
Yeah, it's halfway.
Okay, yeah.
Well, it's the.
Fincham's not going to be answered.
I'm just throwing this out here hypothetically, but uh, um, I would highly doubt if the, if the state would be an agreeing party to closing that road down to a level C. I would doubt stopping access to.
And then they're landlocked.
Yeah, they are, then they're landlocked, so.
Well, that parcel still, that state parcel still borders on Bayfield farther to the southwest.
It does, but, but.
Can't get there.
But it, you.
Then it's Conway, whoever's back to the back is landlocked.
The state never, ever has used that road.
Right.
He's not part of Conway or?
Yes.
He is?
Yeah.
Well, they're the ones that would be landlocked.
Well, there's this unknown owner back here too.
Well, unknown, but those are just.
Yeah, that's just.
River changing.
Mm-hmm.
So really, I mean, Conway is the only landowner, you go, you own all the land back there.
Back there, yeah.
Other than that little piece where the state, you know, you have the Fincham on the, on the.
Uh, we, we own from uh, we own ground across Bayfield.
Both sides of the state.
From Bayfield all the way back to the river.
Yeah.
He he going down that way?
So what if we did vacate it from the gate north?
Then half would go to the state, half would go to Fincham and they would be landlocked.
Yeah, you can't vacate it.
I mean, what can we, sell it to Conways?
No.
No.
It goes back from Wednesday thing. There's no selling it. We don't own it.
So it's just our right of way. It's not our land.
Yeah.
Got it.
But it could go to a class C.
It it could officially become gated.
Yeah, it could go to a class C if Fincham, the state of Iowa, and Conway all would be in agreeance on a resolution. Would that be correct?
That's correct, although they don't, current law, they don't have to all be in agreement.
Ah, that's true.
So we could just level C it if we chose to? But really, all that's going to do is is going to, would allow for enforcement of the of access, correct?
So people wouldn't drive down there?
That third day of, was was this hunter beyond the gate?
Pardon?
Was the hunter past the gate on the dirt?
Hunter was down in the uh, jerk comes down to Bayfield. The hunter's parked there, he's down over the hill. There's a ditch that runs that they don't avoid it, or 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 a circling, and he down there pass a ditch at.
Was he north of the gate on that road?
No, he wasn't. A jerk, left gravel road down. He walked over the hill and onto my property.
So he was over by the river?
I I didn't visit with him. Is there a fence then? Did he cross a fence to get onto your property?
No, there's no fence.
So to me, the road's not involved.
No, not involved, but he uh told me we didn't own it, so I wanted to, unless, you know, we found out that we didn't, but you know, can I buy it and still be? We have a a tractor out there. He's been helping me out. His name, oh, there's a uh, woman named Mark Candy.
I've heard that name. Trouble man.
Well, it looks like the neighbor, we don't own that, own that lane, so we can't sell it to you.
Yeah, so the, so there's, there's processes that we would have to go to, so, you know, there, if we vacate a road.
The only way, well, I mean, there's a couple ways you can vaca, I mean, you can vacate. And then the landowners have, they can object, they still do it. If they don't like the answer, they can take it to court. So I mean, you can explain to vacate it, but then they're landlocked.
Yeah.
So solutions we have had before is that he would have to acquire an easement from either Fincham or the DNR or both, so that he could still.
Access, access his parcel.
But then you couldn't gate it off just with an easement.
No, it'd be a private easement, not a public easement.
Well. But I mean, he wouldn't be able to obstruct the road. I mean, yes, with their agreement, he certainly could, but he'd have no legal right to obstruct the road that he doesn't own.
Road would be vacated. It would be private property.
Right. Fincham and the state could, but he couldn't unless he had their authorization to.
He would have to get an easement from the.
Right.
To access his parcel.
But that, that would have to include the 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 gating. Because a normal ease way of ac, or easement of access does not incl, specifically forbids the right to obstruct.
You could also look at a level C all the way to the front.
That's what I was saying.
But if I'm DNR, I, did we, DNR doesn't come down to Bayfield or doesn't? I, it does not work by.
DNR does not come down to Bayfield. The Conway has a property there too.
They're going to say they're landlocked.
Well, no, they're not. Uh.
Kind of does one of these. Bayfield gets both corners and Conway's got this. I'm not very good at demonstrating land with my fingers, but.
DNR owns all the king's bottom there and it just uh, it just, it's got that twenty five acres or or so that just goes to the east and splits Conways is what it does, so um then on that DNR ground.
Well, the DNR ground does touch the road.
Right.
Walk in.
So they're not landlocked.
No, not technically.
No.
Wouldn't be able to get to that meadow, but. That getting wet.
But I'm not sure if they run him here or here. Yeah, I'm not pretty sure where they.
But the fact of the matter is, when you're all said and done, will this solve the, will this solve the issue of an individual trespassing onto your property? Will that solve that?
Because even if we make it a class C and gated at Bayfield, that's still public right of way or still an easement.
Right.
And they would have, they could walk down that lane.
Well, level C is a little different. There's only the property owners, law enforcement, et cetera, that has a right to be in that.
Okay, so there.
On foot. Yeah.
On on foot's for the courts to decide. I'd say, I I don't know is that, I've I've heard that one contested. Courts could easily say, yeah, you can walk in there, you just can't drive it. I don't, I don't. Most people wouldn't, but most people wouldn't climb up. A lot of people wouldn't climb.
The other, the other probably potential and negative to a class C was, you know, we're maintaining that now. Question is how how much? Right? We plow and do other things on that or we're not doing?
We, e- even though it's an A, we treat it like a B, like a B.
Like a B.
We go back to the gate and, and I wouldn't even sure we go back there all, but the blade man does on occasion go back there.
Yeah, that's all sand out out there, you know? And uh I know there's, let's just say there's limited aggregate on that parcel road. I'll put it that way. I don't recall making every work from now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Mr. Conway, what is, what's your primary goal? You want to keep trespassers off? You want to own the lane?
No, I just want to go down that, you know, go down our lane and uh you know. Well, trespassers too, but you know. Very few trespassers go down there.
Sure. I mean, I I certainly can understand why you were under the oppression that your family owned that. There's nothing we can do on our end to to sell it to you or anything because we don't own it. Um you know, we can we can help you keep it gated, it sounds like, but um you know, in t- in terms of keeping out trespassers, if someone's on foot, I don't know what we can do for you.
Well, trespassers, you know, most of them go down in a, you know, they walk through me to get to the DNR ground.
Sure.
That was uh.
They're coming through your front, what is that, twenty acres there on, that are right on Bayfield?
They have, no, at the far west uh boundary line they come through.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure that, I'm sure you get people that get out of, you know, I, it's, is it, it's not, your parcels are not fenced against the DNR ground? Is there clear demarcation of when they're leaving state ground versus private?
State ground is marked and
Okay.
The like, when our kids were young, they want to go camping in the snow. So we went out there camping in the snow. We figured out something, so we came back to town. And when we got back, there was a deer slug in top of the camper where our, if our older son was sleeping or he'd been dead.
Oh, jeez.
But you know, that's uh, that's been twenty years ago, thirty years ago. But you know, they never, if they down on the bottom, you know, I I don't go, there there's a creek that runs there and uh.
They're cutting across your property so they don't have to cross the creek?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, they don't, no, they just go down on that part, west end. And you know, I don't care if they do that, but I just uh would like to where I can keep that gate there so nobody go down in the stills. Now, they take off, they conway parts of the cow. And they don't need to call on the sheriff. He goes, we called the game ward several times and nothing, never, you know. We, they checked out one time and uh, like Mr. Weiss out there, we finally called him, the game ward. Tom Kemp, that wouldn't answer us, unable to come down town, so we called up Kurt Weiss. And he said, well, the people he talked to, so the shots came from our farm. Well, when I got married in sixty five, I thought on my brother, if he shot, I shot again twice in his lifetime, he's doing good. But all I want is for people, you know, just uh, let us go through the gate and get down to the house.
So what I'm hearing then is 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 you'd like to just leave the gates the way they are? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah. And nobody uses it.
Sure.
We uh, there's never been, well, like I said, no county, something, have you, et cetera?
Mm-hmm.
So because it's just yourself and Fincham that utilizes that, correct?
Well, not Fisher, don't even use it.
He doesn't even utilize it?
He he uses it, well, lies it down by the gravel, then he goes in his field there.
Cause it's all through to the gate.
So. All right before the gates, I see a little, he's got a little offshoot right there where he's driving in.
But yeah, he can't get through that gate.
You know, as long as the farm has.
Mm-hmm.
So does, does someone want you to remove these gates? Is that?
That that hunter.
I don't think the hunter's got any right to tell you what to do. I mean, that's, that would be for your lawyer, but.
He asked, you know, well, he said he's playing meat, you know. Now he's gonna, they're just moving the gates. That's all I want is let leave the gates shut and go down that road, you know, which one I thought we own.
Have you been approached by any, any law enforcement or or any, any, any person with legal authority to have you remove these gates?
No, never have.
Well, gates on account, gates on a, that right of way are really the county engineer's territory, correct?
I don't.
And you don't, you.
You see no need to remove them?
No, I, you know, this, my opinion, this is why the level C came into the code some years ago, because these situations exist out there. And it it simply made them legal. Now, to our knowledge, we've never taken action to make this a level C, because this was one that's been there for decades.
It's just never come up?
It's never came up.
Here's what I'd do. I'd leave those gates stand right there unless there was a um.
Compelling reason.
Uh, uh, yeah, unless there was some, some real reason uh through the engineer's office to uh uh have a change there. And then at that point in time, if that's the case, what I would do is uh, I would approach the engineer and I would approach this board to uh, uh, look at having that converted to a class C. And uh, um, either way, you end up with with your gates on the road just the way they are. That's how I'd approach it if it was me.
And then a level C would, would, by our understanding, uh, the only ones with rights to be a, to access a level C are the people that have the key or the, which are the landowners. or the, which are the landowners that have property there.
And like, they're, every hunter, and not trapper, they gave a key to them, so.
Everybody that you've given.
Yeah, if you let them in, that's fine.
Mr. Henning, and Ira Dunsworth, and Tom Murphy.
Everybody that has permission.
Yeah, has permission.
But if they're a class C, are they labeled class C, graded by county and everything? So, right now, technically, there's no tagging of that on that gate right now. So, that's, I, I think it's a good idea, Scott, I mean, if we can look at that as maybe having him come back, we make that on the agenda, create that to be a level C.
I, I, myself, uh, unless, unless there's legal pressure, I wouldn't do anything with it. Unless there was legal pressure, I wouldn't do anything with it.
Bear in, bear in mind, as he said, we haven't ever gone beyond that gate in forever.
My point exactly.
So, level C kind of implies that we might be doing that.
And, uh, my grandson, and both, both my sons and grandson comes out to farm on Sunday to help me. And every Sunday, that, all that road up, uh, up past the gate, up to Bayfield, just mow all the way down to Juet, and up to our border lane, on Juet, and comes back, and we, we, we mow that every Sunday. I bought him a couple rarer mowers and and, that's what they like to do.
So, so Keith, if we, if we officially make something a class C, a level C, that section of that road, is there a, is that something we unilaterally do? Is it, is it you, i- is there a public hearing process or anything?
No, the code says the board in consultation with the county engineer can do this.
Sounds like it's a level C.
You can turn it to a level C if you so desire.
It, it essentially is.
Which really changes nothing out there other than some signs.
Mm-hmm. Well, it does change the fact that, that
But.
Individuals, uh, without permission do not have a right on that road.
To drive on it.
To, to drive on it. They, they, you know, the, the, this, the whole premise of the argument that, hey, I can come down this road if I want to, 'cause it's, you don't own it, and I'm gonna go do what I want, uh, is, is gone away. If he just still has access to that state land, just park down where there's a parking lot and walk in. And I'm, and I'm fine with that.
I have another question, Keith, if this, if this goes to a class C, um, your department would, would, would you set new posts and, and, and new gates? And, and I mean, the question I have is, would you wanna keep the gate where it is, or would you wanna move that out to Bayfield? Don't know, just a thought I had.
Well, could you just class C it from the gate north?
You could, probably, I'm guessing.
We'd probably want, just to save taxpayer dollars, we'd probably just want to keep the gate.
Just leave it right where it is.
Make sense just to make it.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't know if it made more sense, just a thought.
Well, obviously, we can't take action on that today, it's not on our agenda, but does that make sense to put it on the agenda for a future meeting, changing it over to a class C and?
Well, I don't know that it even has to be on a, an agenda, does it, Keith? It sounds like in consultation, engineer can do that.
Then it's by resolution or ordinance.
Okay.
The way ours reads is by resolution.
Okay.
So, should we put that on for a future meeting here in a week or two?
Well, basically, it's, the, I mean, if we have consensus, it would be to just draft a resolution to designate that as a class C road.
Right, and then just vote on the resolution.
Back.
I, I'm, I'm going to say I'm not, I will not say for sure that we would be back in a week, because I, 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 again, I don't know if this gentleman came in, I don't know who came in, or multiples came in, uh, to ask this question, I was not involved in the conversation. But we have not thoroughly researched the right of way. We didn't.
Yeah.
Probably feel the need at that time anyway, but magic is not always right.
It's a artistic interpretation of the lines.
It, it's, it's pretty darn accurate, but it's just not always right when you have land surveyors digging in the history to see what's there. I, I think you'll find what's represented is the situation, but could be it's not a road anyway. So, we would need to research that.
You wanna look into that and then get back to us when?
We can't, I mean, I can't.
Yeah, can't commit to a timeframe.
That's, that's, absolutely, absolutely.
We'll aim for that, but.
Okay.
Does that satisfy Mr. Conway?
If I can keep my gates where they're at, you know.
It sounds like what we're trying to do.
We're trying to do that.
We gotta make sure we can, but I think we'll, we should be able to, based on what we know now.
Yeah, you know, the right person that goes, goes down there is the Conway family, and the hunters, and, and the trappers.
Yeah.
Sure.
So, they have permission to do it.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
We really might be able to designate the whole thing level C and put the signs at Bayfield, but leave the gate where it's at.
Yeah, that's what we're thinking.
That's what'd be good.
That, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In a couple weeks.
Well, thank you, Keith, for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Conway, thank you for coming in.
Thanks, Dan.
Uh, this farm, we're, we're, we'll sign it over to our kids, you know, the, our fifty-fifth wedding anniversary is May the fifteenth, and I don't think one of us will be there for us.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, any other members of the public wishing to address the board? Item number four is discussion and possible action to approve claims dated December ninth, twenty nineteen, in the amount of three hundred seventy-four thousand, five hundred fifty dollars and twenty-one cents.
Move to approve.
Scott has moved, I'm gonna call Jeff as a second if he's cool with that.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, those opposed, motion passes. Number five, items with county engineer Keith White. Good morning again, Keith.
Good morning. We have one utility permit this morning from Alliant Energy, the Lisbon, Iowa. And it is to bore a twenty-inch gas service across one hundred and eightieth street, uh, to serve a home, I believe it's a home and, uh, residence at twenty-seven, twenty, one eighty. And that's it.
Tell move to approve.
Jeff has moved.
Second.
Santos is second, and to approve the utility permit, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Projects update.
Not much new to report there, other than the, uh, flood repair, the FEMA work on Salisbury Road is substantially complete and being closed out. That's about all that's new in Friday.
Okay. And anything else?
Other, just comment, again, I didn't happen to meet with the gentleman, or I might have been a little more clear on that. Uh, just sounds to me like, you know, if it was myself that was in there on his property, I would be apologizing and saying, I didn't realize I wandered over, but it sounded like we, somebody, some fine individual wanted to be confrontational to the gentleman, which is rather unfortunate how you treat your elders. That, that's my only comment, so.
Yeah, I agree. It's the kind of people give some sportsmen bad names.
Right. That's all I have, any questions?
Anybody have anything for Keith? Thank you, sir. Item number six is discussion and possible action to approve the minutes of the November twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen regular meeting.
Move to approve.
Jeff has moved, Scott has seconded, those in favor?
Aye.
Item seven, correspondence, Santos?
Um, just, uh, I've gotten a call in regards to if we had had any updates on what's going on with Crossroads, and, uh, I shared with the gentleman the information that we had gotten from, uh, Mr. Hayes, that's all I had.
Okay. Jeff?
Uh, nothing to note.
I did not, Scott?
I had no correspondence.
Alrighty, committees, anyone?
I have, I have, uh, on Monday, the twenty-fifth, uh, conservation board. And there, Kurt is looking, uh, at the, down Deep Lakes, the, the high water situation down there, and, uh, the board is, uh, pretty, feeling pretty, pretty pleased and pretty fortunate that, uh, they had a high water event this past year on where they were gonna put these cabins at. And, uh, Mother Nature's kinda helped them find a level, shall I say, that might be more appropriate. And, uh, so, it appears that the, the cabins are gonna be uh, set and installed at a level approximately a foot and a half to maybe as much as two foot higher than what was originally planned, simply because Mother Nature helped make that decision. So, uh, uh, high water's been unfortunate, but it, you know, on the other side of the coin, it's been, we've been fortunate that it helped to see the real impact.
Scott, are they moving the location of those, or they just, uh, I mean, I was out there, it looked like they cut some banks and they're, and they're filling, but are they moving up the west on that?
I believe they are. I believe they're looking at, at a little different, different, uh, site.
It looked to me like they were excavating a place kinda west of where they originally were, that appears to be five or six feet above high water. Which would probably be a great decision.
Yeah, so, uh, that ended up, uh, being, uh.
A silver lining, huh?
The, the, the main discussion on that particular meeting, and I, I, I self, I told the board, I said, you know, I said, with this levy group that we've been working with regarding to overall raising the levy, uh, for the entire distance down there, I said, it, it could be a situation, um, in the future, that, uh, the river will actually be able to, the levy will actually be able to hold back more water if an event is higher than we saw this year to a degree, and, and so, you know, it's, it's not gonna get, the impact will not be less at a point in time down the road if this levy is constructed and, and elevated, but, uh, um, yeah, it's, it's just a great idea to kinda get those as high as you can get them, I think you're gonna save yourself a lot of cost and, and effort for them down the road.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's all I have.
I had nothing, now Jeff?
I had nothing.
Santos?
Nothing.
Okay. Item number nine, receive information from county employees. No takers. Item number ten, items with the administration office, ten A is action to accept the November twenty nineteen payroll claims.
Move to approve. Second.
Jeff has moved, Santos has seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anything else, Nancy?
I don't have anything else.
Anybody else have anything? Speak now, forever hold your peace, adjourn.